All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Covington. This meeting is hereby called by order. I need a roll call.
Councilman Lewis, Councilman Bushnell.
Here.
Councilman Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Inman.
Here.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilman Bosford.
Here.
Councilman Verrett.
Here. Would you please rise for a moment of silence which will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. And would Stephen Michelle please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We're the leaders of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Christian citizens. One nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to begin this evening, we have a presentation of a proclamation by the city of Covington mayor, Mark Johnson.
Hello. Can you hear me? The city of Covington, Louisiana proclamation. Whereas a safe and adequate blood supply is vital to the health and well-being of our community. Saving countless lives each year through transfusions needed for surgeries, cancer treatments, trauma care, childbirth, and chronic illnesses, and whereas volunteer blood donors are essential to maintaining this life-saving resource. Generously generously giving of their time and compassion to help ensure that blood is available whenever needed. And whereas every two seconds someone in the United States requires a blood transfusion. Yet only a small percentage of eligible donors give blood each year, creating an ongoing need for greater community participation. Whereas the residents, businesses, schools, civic organizations of the city of Covington have long demonstrated a spirit of generosity, compassion, and civic responsibility by supporting one another in times of need, and whereas encouraging blood donations among the city of Covington residents helps strengthen our local healthcare system, supports hospitals across the region, and contributes to the safety and resilience of the communities, and whereas the city of Covington recognizes the extraordinary contributions of volunteer blood donors and calls upon all citizens to participate in this life-saving act of kindness. Now therefore, we, the city of Covington and Mark Johnson mayor, city of Covington, do by hereby proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-six, Blood Donor Awareness Month in the city of Covington, and call upon all citizens, businesses, churches, schools, and organizations to participate in and promote blood donation efforts throughout the year, recognizing the life-saving power of this simple yet profound act of kindness. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we have a peers this evening, Covington High School. FFA parliamentary procedure team, welcome, and Councilman Inman.
Yes, this is our parliamentary procedure team at the the local high school, and they focus on Roberts Rules of Order. So this evening, they wanted to come in and see it in practice, and I said, well, that's that's not good enough. You need to come up here and be an up here. So fortunately, they're gracing our presence, and they're going to give us a little synopsis of what it means to be on this parliamentary procedure team. Thank you.
Y'all want to introduce yourselves first?
Yes, sir. We are the Covington High FFA Parliamentary Procedure Team. My name is Bianca Childress.
My name is Tristan Angela, and this is...
My name is Bentley Taravella.
Abigail Pellegrin.
We are ninth grade members of the Covington High FFA chapter, except for Abigail, who is a sophomore. And we are here to talk about Robert's Rules of Order, how it is implemented in our competition, how the competition works, and why order and structure are essential to our daily lives. Tristan, would you like to start?
Today I will talk to you about something something that's fundamental to our success as assembly, as an organization, and even as a society, the essential role of structure. Structure is something that we use in our everyday lives, whether it be driving, going to school, or even a job. We always have some structure-based way of doing things, and without structure, there wouldn't be any order or peace. One example in my life where I use structure every day is in Mr. Inman's classroom. We have a system where we go and get our documents by row, and this assures that when we get our documents, there isn't any infraction or chaos, and it's all organized. Now you're probably wondering, how does this relate to FFA and what we do in FFA? Well, I could sit here, talk for hours about how we use structure in our organization. But one really good way we use structure is in the competition called parliamentary law. We have to abide by the bylaws that are written in Robert's Rules of Order, as explained in the eighteenth chapter. We must follow the bylaws slash constitution of parliamentary law to be able to run a well-organized meeting, and this goes along with everyday society. If we want to be a well-organized and peaceful society, we must obey the bylaws and follow structure. Thank you.
In the parliamentary law competition, we are tasked with creating a realistic demonstration of a chapter meeting, which includes fulfilling debate requirements, two debates per person on main motions, and two debates on extras. And in addition to that, we also have to fulfill our motion requirements. So we have to, we are assigned a main motion, and then we are also assigned an extra motion. And this must be done in addition to crafting well-formed debates. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions for you, but I have a statement. I used to be a chapter farmer, and I was on the parliamentary debate team for in Slot L, for Slot High. And I really appreciate what y'all do. That's really kind of stepping up, especially, you know, being in ninth grade. That's a great thing. I know my daughter's following, or my granddaughter's actually following in to the same footsteps in four H, and so hopefully, hopefully soon, she'll be in FFA and continue that. Thank you.
Question?
Have y'all in any of your competitions ever seen a team that wasn't very well-prepared and didn't have their rules of order down? And therefore the structure and...
Yes, sir.
How'd that go for them?
Um, not 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 too well.
Well, thank y'all for being here. I've enjoyed hearing what you had to say.
Compliments to you for being here, compliments for you doing it, and hope you stay and see a little fireworks, right? No, there's no fireworks.
Well, let's hope not.
Councilman Inman?
Look, thank y'all for being here. It takes a lot to put yourselves out in front of people. And what you're doing is, well, learning about how this process takes place. And again, you'll see it in action tonight, and hopefully you can model your behavior off of what you see. So thank you again for coming out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Under our consent calendar this evening, we have our regular meeting minutes of November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. An introduction of item number two thousand twenty-five dash twelve dash zero one, an ordinance of the city of Covington providing for an increase in compensation for the city council for the city of Covington, which increase would become effective on July first, two thousand twenty-seven. We also have introduction of item number two thousand twenty-five dash twelve dash zero two, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Covington to rezone lots five and six and the portion of the revoked alley. Square two thousand six, division of New Covington, city of Covington, from neighborhood commercial to regional commercial. I need a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'd like a second.
Second.
Can I get a roll call?
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes. Under our regular agenda, unfinished business, items to be voted on. Public hearing in action on item number two thousand twenty-five dash eleven dash zero one. An ordinance of the city of Covington enlarging the boundaries of the city of Covington, describing the property to be annexed and added thereto as tracks B one A, B one B, and B one C. That is section twenty-nine, Township Six South, Range eleven East, and also classifying this property as regional commercial under the zoning laws of the city of Covington. First of all, I need to address there is per section of the ordinance. This property is actually within District C. It is on page two, referred as District A. So I need a motion to amend that to District C.
Motion to amend?
Second.
Need a second? A roll call, please.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Roberts?
Yes, thank you. So this is the, if you're not familiar with this, the tract of land, twelve acres. It's going to be in front of Oak Alley Meadows in District C, right before you hit Covington High. They're looking to put a baseball training facility there. I think it's the best use of land we can use because it's least resistant to our wastewater treatment, what we have. So I know annexing becomes a key word there, do we do this, do we not? But I think it's probably the best fit for what we're trying to do. It was voted five-zero unanimously for a zoning commission meeting, and I just ask that y'all approve it as well.
Are there any public comments? Are there any further council comments? I would just echo those comments made by Councilman Roberts. I think it's an excellent use of the property, and for the reasons that that he put forth, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, and I need a second.
Second.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Under new business, we have items to be voted on, specifically resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. A resolution of the Covington City Council authorizing the mayor of the city of Covington to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Louisiana. Councilman Lewis is not here, and he has asked another councilman to address it.
Yes, this is basically allowing the mayor to distribute funds for the Boys and Girls Club, which is long overdue, and a great thing, and a great thing for the city of Covington. And beyond that, I'm going to turn it over to the administration for comments.
Yes, so if you recall, we we received a state appropriation for a million dollars for the construction of a Boys and Girls Club, and the funding is basically going to go directly to them toward the cost of the project. So we, last month, you approved the resolution to allow us to enter into the funding agreement with the state for the million dollars, and this month, this resolution is our agreement directly with the Boys and Girls Club for the funding.
Any public comment? Any further council comment?
I'll I'll say I'm excited for the Boys and Girls Club. It's amazing. I'm so glad to see where they're going and where they were and what their future looks like. So good kudos to them and for Covington as well. So thank you.
A new new site, you know, new construction, you know, new beginnings. Wonderful thing.
As I was there for the groundbreaking, I can tell you that that excitement is shared by the entire community, especially those in that area. So kudos to all that made this happen. I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
We wish Councilman Lewis well wishes this evening. He is not here for a family matter. And so we will move on to council district reports from District B, Councilman Bushnell.
Thank you, Councilman. A few Christmas events coming on in the city this week, this month, excuse me. The Lollipops Christmas Parade will be Saturday, December thirteenth, starting at three. You can go to Covington's website and check out the route for that. And after the parade at the trailhead, it'll be Christmas in Covenant with a guest appearance by Santa Claus, and be lighting the Christmas tree at five-thirty. On Friday, December nineteenth, at six P M. at the trailhead, be covered by candlelight music by the Zion Harmonizers. So come and check some Christmas carols out there, and remember to shop local in this holiday season, and I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Roberts?
Yeah, I'm I'm light as far as District C goes. No complaints, no speeding, no anything. So I appreciate, you know, police presence. Everything was good, and Jim, you always say Public Works is amazing. So without jinxing myself, thank y'all for what you're doing in District C, for sure.
Excellent. Good to hear. Councilman Inman?
Yes, real quick, potholes and ruts along Jefferson Military have been addressed. Speed data studies are being implemented and requested. South Taylor and Twenty-third is another one. Lines have been repaired, whether they're water lines or sewer lines, on Nineteenth and Twenty-fourth, respectively. In terms of Gallagher Park, a real quick update, the Nut All Oaks have been planted. They look wonderful. So thank you to the administration for going above and beyond there. When I say above and beyond, I think these trees are pushing twenty feet tall already, so it's quite impressive. The tennis court is, well, it's even closer than it's been in the past, so that's a wonderful thing. And then the Covington High School Ag Department is going to work with the city to install a picket fence along Fifteenth Avenue. This is a public safety measure as well as a beautification measure, so that's that's a wonderful thing. At the library, Councilman Bushnell would probably, you know, be the perfect representative over there, given his beautiful jacket this evening. December thirteenth, they have the holiday pitch. You can show up with your camera, and they'll have the background ready, Councilman Bushnell notwithstanding. Ten A M. to noon is that that session. December fifteenth, Mrs. Claus Tea. So if you want to go have tea with Mrs. Claus, eleven A M. to noon. December seventeenth, ten A M. to eleven A M. is the Kids' Santa event, so Santa will be there. And if you want to kick it up a notch on December nineteenth, yeah, Harry Potter, the Yule Ball. It'll be two to four P M. in the afternoon, so go scope that out. And, you know, well wishes to my missus, so she's on the mend, and I appreciate all of the people reaching out. Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Morell?
All right, District E's been a little bit busy. In November, Three Rivers Ark Festival, another success, seems to be every year. It was fantastic weather, so that was a great event. Hope everybody was able to attend. If not, mark your calendar for next year. This past weekend, we had the Porch Fest. Weather was a little dicey in the morning, but it turned out to be a beautiful afternoon. And so thank you to all the homeowners that opened up their porches and their front yards, and all the musicians that share their talents for a great cause. That was a really wonderful event, and look forward to it again next year. John, thank you for helping put that on. I think people have covered most of the Christmas events, except for the Holiday Home Tour, also in District E this year, so that's on Sunday, the fourteenth, always a great event. Other than that, city looks wonderful. I love the Christmas decorations. I love the Twelve Nights at Christmas. I said this last year. The boys want to do this scavenger hunt for the Twelve Nights at Christmas every year, so the kids enjoy that. Take them out on a bike or ride around in your golf cart, whatever, and look for the the Twelve Nights at Christmas. That's always fun. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you all.
Councilman Delore?
Yeah, first off, I wanted to go over the updates from the the Food Bank. They wanted to put a big shout out to Covington High, the local high schools, and the food drives from just local individuals, businesses, and everything, that they actually met their goal, and that's a that's a great thing. Because, you know, especially with the shutdown and everything that was going on. Their November stats, average for November two thousand twenty-five was one hundred and thirteen daily households served. Total for November was one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine households. New household registrations, one hundred and sixteen new house signups for food. Holiday meal boxes in two thousand twenty-five is five hundred were distributed for Thanksgiving, and holiday meal boxes for two thousand twenty-four was only four hundred, so they're up by a hundred on that. Comparison averages for November, two thousand twenty-five is one hundred and thirteen daily households versus two thousand twenty-four, which is ninety-four. Once again, numbers are up. Comparison total for two thousand twenty-five is one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine total households. Only nine hundred and thirty-seven in two thousand twenty-four. Once again, it's up. The amount of food drives our community has been breathtaking. November, the donations was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-two pounds of food versus two thousand twenty-five, which is was only, or excuse me, that was in two thousand twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-five was fifty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-four pounds. That's amazing. Our community really stepped up. So they're going to do the trim the trailhead. The trees are up. They're getting decorated this week. They're pretty much hard done with that, so go by the trailhead and stop and look, check that out. Also, go by the trailhead on Wednesdays for the farmer's market, as well as right by us behind here on Saturdays. Like Todd said, Porch Fest was dicey as usual. It rains every year, but it was a great success. Mind everybody to shop local. Also, for the admin, I want to give you guys a kudos because of that rain event that we had that washed everything out and stuff, all the bumps and lumps and stuff, and it seemed, I don't know if y'all had anything to do with that or not, but they they filled it back in. And that last big rain event we had where they did the...
Yeah, kudos to Public Works. I mean, they, as soon as they saw it and recognized it, the guys were out there, crews refilling those potholes that washed out, and other crews raking up autumn leaves out of the culverts that that washed out of people's yards and start blocking it, so they were just Johnny on the spot, so very fortunate.
Yeah, we're very fortunate for that. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's it.
All right, as Councilman Morell said, on Sunday is the History and Holly Home Tour, put on by the Covenant Heritage Foundation. It'll be from two to five P M. Registration will be at Saint Paul's Chapel. We encourage you to go out, and it's always a good time. And I was at the Rotary Club Feed the Need today. It was a good reminder of keep in your prayers those that are less fortunate than we are. It's a privilege to serve the city of Covington, and it's a privilege to work with you all. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and with that, we will turn it over to administration.
I'd like to add just a couple of little tidbits to some of the things you guys mentioned. Kudos to the Lollipop Dance Group, who came to us a few years ago with the idea of doing a Christmas parade, which the city of Covington did not have, and we acquiesced and laid out some stringent guidelines. You do it, you organize it, you pay for it. Over the time, the city has gotten a little bit more and a little bit more involved, and they've earned it. And so if you haven't been to the to the their parade on Saturday, the city of Covington's Christmas parade on Saturday, do that three o'clock to four o'clock right in downtown. As Councilman Bushnell mentioned, it ends at the trailhead. Santa Claus will be there, lots of arts and crafts for the kids. There will be a petting zoo, and a big hit is karaoke, children's karaoke Christmas songs. And they get to get up on the stage and sing, and we had no idea how popular that would be. So that's worked out really well, and we do a lighting of the Christmas tree at five-thirty. There will probably be a mayor from South Louisiana marching in the parade with the lollipops and doing the dance moves, so that that'll probably take place too. On the the Heritage Foundation has done a really great job this year with the History and Holly Home Tour. They'll have five members of the LPO there playing. The Knights of Columbus will be walking around caroling. Kehoe Francis Children's Choir will be caroling. There'll be a Christmas market spread out, and your ticket includes libations. So as always, just one of Covington's signature events. On Friday evening, the Zion Harmonizers were mentioned. They'll be doing a concert at the trailhead on Friday, the nineteenth. And the last song that they do will be Silent Night, and it'll be an audience participation song with candles, lit candles passed out through the audience, so really, really a nice way to kick off the Christmas season. And another nice gift for kicking off the Christmas season would be tomorrow morning, Santa Claus is coming a little bit early. We should start paving Gibson Street, and and then moving on to Rutland. And hopefully by the end of the week, Santa Claus will be gone, and we'll have two nice, new, shiny, smooth streets in downtown. So looking forward to that.
Administration, in regards to the proclamation, was there someone here that you wanted to take a photo with or provide the proclamation? And if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you. Yes, my name is Michael Epperson. So going through life, I knew donating was right. I mean, it's kind of one of the things you're like, yeah, that's something to do. Eight hundred and sixty-four days ago, I realized how truly important that is. My three-year-old has died from cancer. They found a size tumor in a pelvic area, and it's been two years of treatment. And it's, I'm talking dozens of rounds of chemo. I think we're nineteen or twenty at this point. She's had two tumor sections. She's had countless other smaller procedures. And every time you're getting that chemo... And every time you're getting that chemo, it's just, it's so tough for your blood to recover from that. I mean, she's getting blood transfusions, blood transfusions. She got to eighty-four, eighty-four blood transfusions, one of the other. And I think of that, it's like eighty-four times that someone went in there and gave their time so she could continue treatment and stay alive. I'll tell you, like, one of our scariest moments was when her platelets were getting low because she gets what they call fatigue asshole blood spots because her blood just is not vibrating. And we had to drive across the lake to the back town hospital. And... I remember, I remember my wife saying, just don't bend the rig. Because if you think about that, your platelets are so low. It's not like you get a cut and bleed out. It's you get a brain bleed, anything like that, and you're done. You're done. And that was a real realization of how dangerous it is that once you're all done. And that she could not have done it without all of these people. When we got down there, she had blood speckles coming out of her nose, because there was just nothing to solidify that. And I'm sitting there just waiting and waiting for blood to get there because, you know, this time of year, it's pretty challenging. You know, platelets are only good for like five days. And so I'm so happy and so thankful for the council for bringing to life the need for blood, and for the people of Covington that take their time to go out there, for the blood center for providing that avenue to get the blood to her. And she's doing well now. She's about six months remission. But the key thing to remember is, I mean, there's still kids in there. I mean, my daughter, but there's hundreds. There's hundreds of kids out in the state that are sitting in hospitals. They're going to be the only person to save. I think that's the last of it. And so just here to encourage anyone and everyone, if you have a human to your day at times, that there's only some blood and platelets. And thank you, everyone, for what you did with the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Billy Wills. I'm the president and CEO of the Blood Center. I asked Michael to be here tonight because I think it's really important that you all hear the impact from an individual whose life was impacted by what you all do, what we all do. Take a few minutes out of your life every day and donate blood. It makes a huge difference. If everybody had donated blood once a year, donated twice, we could avert most blood shortages in this country. The overwhelming majority of the blood shortages would be averted. So in my mind, I've been doing this for thirty-seven years. I'm a forty-nine-year resident of the Covington, Louisiana. So let me say clearly, in my mind, when you think about it, the life you save today could be yours or could be one of your loved ones. So get out and donate. It really is not difficult. We appreciate this. Mayor Mark, thank you so much. We appreciate the proclamation. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, I will remind everybody that our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, January thirteenth. If there are any problems, let's wait till next year. See you.